Good evening. I would like to welcome Billy Lowe with City Church who will lead us in tonight's invocation.
All right, let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for another beautiful day. Thank you for this great city. Thank you for the wisdom that you've given to this council. Lord, as we always pray, we pray for your protection and guidance over the city that you would continue to allow it to flourish. Lord, we pray for our first responders as they sacrifice for us that you would protect them and their families and they would know just how grateful we are for them. And Lord, we pray for wisdom, that you would give wisdom to this group as they lead this city. Father, would you pour out your spirit on it? We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. I would like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council from Monday, April 28th, 2025 to order. The city encourages you to review tonight's agenda carefully. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. While the Milton rules allow a speaker to turn in their comment card up until the clerk calls the agenda item, once the agenda item is called, no more comment cards can be accepted. Will City Clerk please call the roll and make general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Be happy to call roll for the April 28th, 2025 regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. As the mayor mentioned, if you would like to make a public comment, then you are required to complete a public comment card prior to the agenda item being called. If you are representing an organization, a notarized affidavit is required stating you have the authority to speak on behalf of that organization. If you have not submitted your comment cards, please bring your cards to me now. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited. Please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outburst, or dialogue with any person speaking. Mayor and Council, as I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Peyton Jameson?
Here.
Councilmember Dukanee?
Here.
Councilmember Juliet Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Carol Cookerly?
Here.
Councilmember Jan Jacobus? And Councilmember Phil Kramer?
Here.
For the record, Councilmember Andrea Veerhoff is absent. Mayor, you do have a quorum. Would everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is approval of the meeting agenda. Steve, we're going to do executive session tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to approve the meeting agenda with the addition of an executive session to discuss personnel, land acquisition, and litigation. So open up for motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Cranmer and a second from Councilwoman Jacobus to approve the meeting agenda with the addition of an executive session. Is the voting open?
Yeah.
Your voting's open, yes. Refresh.
Yeah, what's wrong with y'all?
Oh, okay.
Come on, guys.
Where do I refresh?
That's not working.
Where do I refresh?
Oh, wait, where are you?
Carol and I are somewhere else.
We have a different look. How'd you do that?
Over there.
Oh, thank you.
How many people does it take?
I'm so glad, I'm so glad.
All right, now we're good. All right, that motion passes unanimously.
I couldn't resist here.
Okay, um, okay, so that motion passes unanimously. Next is general public comment. Do we have any general public comment?
We do, Mayor. We have one.
Okay, general public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and the city council and to provide opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of the city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name, address, and organization if applicable for the record. If you will, please call the first public comment.
I'll be happy to, Mayor. And just as a reminder, the general public comment is allotted five minutes. I will announce when one minute remains, and then I will announce when time has expired. Ben Kopaka, I invite you to the podium.
Good evening, Council. My name is Ben Kopaka. I live at 14115 Bristol Road. I'm the property owner along with my wife. I'm here today to give you some background on a violation that I received in regards to a home business occupation as well as agricultural use on my property. In September of last year, I was written up for both of these that I was in violation for having equipment in the form of a skid steer, a mini excavator, and a tractor, as well as trailers, on my property. I was told that they were, I was written up because the opinion was they were being used in my business, and that was a violation of the home occupancy business. I stated that was not the case. I then invited the code enforcement officer over to the property. We did a walkthrough, went around the property, asked me to remove certain items. I complied. And then he said the equipment at the time was acceptable because it was personally owned property. I stated it was personally owned property, and it remains personal property to this day. In January, he came back for a final inspection of the violations, and at that time approved everything that was done, and then asked me why the equipment was still there. So again, I stated this is personally owned property, purchased. It's not stickered. It's not lettered. It was never owned or purchased by my business. I own and operate a site works and grading company within Milton. My home-based business portion is basically project management estimating and office work. So at that time, the code enforcement officer made the determination that he did not have the authority to rule on this matter. So we set up a meeting with the community development director to discuss. At that meeting, we discussed basically the letter of the law, which was put in front of me for the first time. It was the Unified Development Code, April 8th, 2024, Article 9, Site Development Section 9.1.7, Off-Street Loading. Heavy construction, earth-moving equipment, tractors, or other heavy construction vehicles may only be stored in residential, agricultural, or non-residential districts during construction associated with an active building permit or land disturbance permit. So in this meeting, this was the first time I had read it, and I pretty much asked, I said, well, every property in Milton owns a tractor, and everyone operates it on a daily basis. So that's the letter of the law, and that's what you're asking me to comply to. I will comply, and I did. I removed all of that equipment to my light industrial property, which is legally owned in Ball Ground where I operate the business, consistent with the zoning of Light Industrial for Cherokee County. So after that, I was pretty much told to, that I would have to go to court to fight it or face fines on my property, which I spent a lot of time building and working on. So my concerns from this meeting are the inability for the city officials to use reason when a resident brings up good documentation and effort to show that they weren't in violation of anything. The language and verbiage of this section of code, as I stated, says no tractors. Every farm has a tractor. This code piece lacks specifics to what is defined, which is earth-moving equipment, tractors, or heavy construction vehicles. That could be anything. It could be a bulldozer. It could be an excavator. It could be a truck. And then every other time, it says that to use this equipment, there must be a land disturbance permit or a building permit on the property.
One minute.
So that means every time I mow my grass till a garden or drag an arena, I have to have a land disturbance permit or a building permit. So I've suffered financial damages from this and personal damages in having to remove this from my property. I've met with my attorney. I've completed my due diligence. In the six weeks, I've driven around, taken pictures, and I have sent in every violation that I can find under the letter of this law. The the response from the city has been that there is no violation. And when asked and additional clarification was given, the response was also no violation. So in closing, why am I the perfect case study? Well, I have a home occupation business that involves site work and grading and heavy equipment. The equipment's not stickered. It's not lettered. It's not owned by the business. I enjoy working in my yard daily on agricultural activities, and that's why I live here. I'm on a small parcel, 1.9 acres, on one of the busiest roads in Milton. I had these issues before in 2022. The city's problem was to give me an agricultural exemption to solve this issue. I put in the application. The city never followed through. So in this instance, I was unable to have anything or any ground to stay on. I believe there are a lot of solutions for this. There's exceptions. The donor can sign an affidavit. You know, you guys are talking about how to keep large acreage in Milton as a topic of discussion. I'm getting ready to spend a million to $3 million in Ball Ground in Cherokee County. If I could do that here on 10 acres or something similar, not in a light, not in a commercial mean or light industrial mean, means, and I could just have equipment parked, and I could come and go with no one coming to the property or business, maybe the equipment gets grabbed every day, or maybe I could find a way to cash flow with it, I would certainly do it. So that's, that's my general comment, and that's what I put before you as a council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any more public comment?
We do, Mayor. We have one. It's Ben Croft. I invite you to the podium.
Hello, my name is Ben Crofts. I live at 300 Sablewood Drive in Alpharetta in Milton, right on the line there. So I'm here on behalf of Hopewell Baseball to talk about the Deerfield facility and how important it is for us to keep the plans hopefully the same and play baseball on a baseball diamond and not multi-use fields. I won't take your full five minutes here. I'm just going to bring two points that I think are very important to this scenario, and number one being safety. For everyone who knows baseball, which I'm sure all you guys do, this facility being played on a multi-use shaped field that is not a baseball diamond presents a very dangerous risk to bystanders, especially as these kids are getting older, they're getting stronger, the equipment is continuing to evolve. Not having adequate foul ground ball space and foul balls presenting not only a risk to people but property as well as far as parked cars and everything else. So safety being the number one concern on why I think Deerfield needs to be a baseball dedicated facility and not multi-use. Aside from that is baseball experience. I think this community has an incredible and very fortunate opportunity to have one of the best baseball facilities in the state of Georgia. And as y'all well know, baseball is an incredible sport here and very popular. So playing baseball on a baseball diamond, there's nothing like it. It has an interesting shape that maybe of 200 years ago, we could have changed, we might have, but playing baseball on a baseball diamond, playing baseball on a rectangle field with a million different lines and incorrect shape is, it provides a completely different experience for these kids and all the families that are involved. It means a lot to me because having three sons in this community makes me sad as all these kids that grew up in this community leave to other communities to play baseball. Field space is one of those big things, and this, this one means a lot to me because we have an opportunity to not only have one of the best facilities in the entire state, but to keep our community alive and playing a sport that I'm really passionate about. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more public comment?
Mayor, that concludes general public comment.
Okay, I'll close public comment, and then we will now move on to the consent agenda. Will City Clerk please say on the items?
Mayor, that first item A is approval of the April 14th, 2025 regular city council meeting minutes. It's agenda item number 25093. B is approval of the April 21st, 2025 city council work session meeting minutes, agenda item number 25094. Item C is approval of the financial statements and investment report for the period ending February 28th, 2025. Agenda item number 25095. Item D is approval of a recreation provider agreement between the city of Milton and Happy Kids Yoga LLC to provide youth recreational fitness programming. Agenda item number 25096. Item E is approval of a recreation provider agreement between the city of Milton and Romans Kicks and Tricks LLC to provide youth recreational martial arts programming. Agenda item number 25097. Item F is approval of a memorial memorandum of understanding between the city of Milton and the NOC Adventure LLC to provide transportation and outdoor recreation opportunities to Milton residents in summer 2025. Agenda item number 25098. Our final consent agenda item is G, approval of a construction services agreement between the city of Milton and Blount Construction Company, Inc. for the fiscal year 25 reconstruction and resurfacing contract. It's agenda item number 25099. Mayor Jameson?
Thank you. I'd like to open it for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
May I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Second?
Okay, I have a motion from Councilwoman Haney and a second from Councilwoman Johnson to approve the consent agenda as read. The voting is open. Doug?
Councilwoman Haney?
It's coming, it's coming.
Oh, you're on your computer. All right, that motion passes unanimously. Okay, we will now move on to reports and presentations. Will City Clerk please say on the first item?
Mayor, that first item is going to be a proclamation recognizing April 20th through the 26th as Georgia Cities Week in Milton. Mayor Jameson?
Thank you. This week, we are proud to join communities across the state in celebrating Georgia Cities Week, an annual initiative led by the Georgia Municipal Association to recognize the vital services, leadership, and community efforts that help our city thrive. Whereas the Georgia Municipal Association has spearheaded Georgia Cities Week for the past 26 years to highlight services, projects, and programs in municipal governments. And whereas Milton celebrated the most recent edition between April 21st through the 26th, which had a theme of imagine the possible, playing off how cities think big to make major positive impacts benefiting their communities in the short and long term. And whereas the city of Milton highlighted ways we serve our citizens, businesses, and others hosted a family-friendly event at Milton City Park and Preserve and welcomed people to meet our police and fire chiefs over the course of the week. And whereas even more importantly, and as we do every week of the year, our government continued providing the outstanding customer service that led us being recognized as number one in service among local governments nationwide. And whereas members of Team Milton routinely go above and beyond to insist, engage, and generally serve any way we can. And whereas we see public service as a calling and know we are blessed with caring collaborative partners in the people of Milton. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of the city of Milton, recognize the recent Georgia Cities Week and the relentless dedicated efforts of our team members to serve our community, given under my hand and seal of the city of Milton, Georgia on this 28th day of April of 2025. Congratulations. So Team Milton can come up?
We're at the Deacon Out stage, huh?
Get the tall guy in. Good-looking city.
Okay, we will move on to the next item. Please say on the next item.
Mayor, that next item, item B, is the Milton Fiscal Year 2024 Annual Audit Presentation. Our deputy city manager, Bernadette Harville.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. State law requires the city to undergo an independent external audit of its financials annually to ensure compliance with auditing and accounting standards. Tonight, we have our lead auditor, Will Durzis, who is a CPA and director with our auditing firm, Malden and Jenkins, here to present an overview from the auditor's discussion and analysis for fiscal year 2024. This report in its entirety, along with a copy of the annual comprehensive financial report, can be found in tonight's packet as well as on the city website.
Just like the error or the page.
Use the page.
Perfect. Thanks. Thank you, Mayor and Council. As Bernadette mentioned, my name is Will Durzis. I'm a director with Malden and Jenkins, and I've been a part of the city of Milton audit team for close to about 10 years now. And my presentation tonight, as Bernadette mentioned, will be based off of our auditor's discussion and analysis to provide a snapshot and an overview of the audit process and the results of the city's most recent fiscal year. So we'll jump right into it. All right, here on page two, this just provides a brief snapshot of Malden Jenkins governmental practice as well as some of the other engagement team leaders and those a part of the engagement, including Adam Fraley and our quality control review, Meredith Lipson. Page three provides a little bit more information, some other industry services offered by Malden and Jenkins. All right, moving on to page four, a few things that I have to communicate to you as the council and the mayor. Our responsibility as external auditors is to express an opinion in accordance with GAAP and in accordance with standards accepted within the United States, and as well as an additional set of standards specific to the city referred to as government auditing standards. So I'm pleased to share, we did issue an unmodified or a clean report on the city's financial statements for September 30, 2024. And on page five, as Bernadette mentioned, the city prepared an act for an annual comprehensive financial report, which goes above and beyond the standard requirements required by the state of Georgia, includes some other non-financial data, demographic statistics, and some other information. So kudos to the city's finance team. Excuse me. All right, so moving on to page seven, we'll get into some of the financial highlights and snapshot of the city as of September 30, 24. So as of September 30, 24, the city is currently reporting assets of approximately 270 million, offset by liabilities in total of about 95 million, and that results in the city reporting equity, or as it's referred to, net position of approximately 175 million. It's worth noting, of that total, a large majority, about 126 million, is composed of the city's investments, capital assets, infrastructure, buildings, machinery and equipment, offset by any debt that encumbers those assets. There are also restricted amounts, restricted by external third parties, federal programs, other, other external parties of about 33 million, and that results in the city having approximately 16 million. That's considered unrestricted and therefore available for use. Statement of activities reported within the act, or you can think of that as the city's income statement, and it is reporting a change of, or in addition of about 11 million in net income to the city. Page eight, you can see a kind of a visual depiction of the city's general fund, which is the primary operating fund of the city, and and as you, as you might imagine, property, sales tax, including franchise and business tax, that makes up about 70% of the general fund revenues for the most recent fiscal year. And then on page nine, we can see that public safety expenses reported within the general fund. That makes up about 53% of That makes up about fifty-three percent of general fund expenses. Some additional charts and graphs are depicted on the following page, including a trend of the general fund fund balance or its equity over time. It's noteworthy that in 2024 expenditures slightly outpaced total revenues, but at the end of twenty-four, unassigned or available general fund fund balance is about forty percent of total expenditures. So anything over twenty-five percent is deemed to be a healthy position. Page eleven makes mention of the footnotes that accompany the financial statements. They provide a little bit of background and narrative on some of the financial reporting. And then page fourteen, some additional required communications during our audit. We encountered no disagreements, no other issues with management. We made requests of management to sign certain representations, which we received from management with no issue. We had no past audit adjustments. There were some audit adjustments that were posted to the city's funds by its management team and some other auditor-based entries during the year. And then we're also independent of the city in all respects, which is kind of the cornerstone of an effective audit. On page seventeen, we do have one item that is reported as a finding within the city's financial statements this year related to some audit adjustments posted to properly record and report its property tax revenues within its general fund, but also the Green Space Bond Fund, which accounts for the part of the military dedicated to debt service. And then we have one other management recommendations regarding some outstanding cash bonds payable. That total has dwindled over time, which is what you want to see. But as of the end of 2024, with that point, still applied. Lastly, I'll just make a brief mention. You can see on page eighteen, there's some additional information on upcoming new GASB's new accounting pronouncements that will have an impact within the city's future reporting. And you don't need to be an expert or a CPA or anything to kind of read through this, but it just provides a kind of a snapshot of some potential future changes. So even if you're not directly involved in the audit process, it's still a good idea to stay up to date. But that concludes my presentation for this evening. And if mayor and council have any questions, I'd be happy to answer anything.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Awesome.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Well, city clerk, please say on the next item.
Mayor, that next item is the Deerfield Active Park Update. Our Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Tom McElveen.
All right. Okay, good evening, mayor and council. What we have for you this evening is a presentation on the status of the Deerfield Active Park Design. With me today is Rob Del Ross, our Deputy Director of Public Works, along with our consultant with Los Designs, Whit Alexander, who's next to me right now. Today, we're seeking feedback on the existing conceptual site plans that Los Designs has created. In tonight's presentation, we'll go over the background leading up to today, an analysis of the site, the schedule for the overall project, the public input measures that we've taken thus far, and how we've taken that input and placed it into the concepts. We will share the two concepts, touching on the parking to accommodate those parks amenities, and engage in some council discussion regarding some options pertaining to park amenities. Okay, how did we get here? And how do we know what we need within this new active park? We have studies and plans that support this additional capacity for fields. In the comprehensive 2027 Parks and Recreation Master Plan, it called for the addition of several park amenities, many of them being addressed in the concepts you'll see later tonight. The need for additional diamond-shaped fields and baseball, softball were identified as needs for our community, along with more rectangular-shaped multipurpose fields, playgrounds, and picnic pavilions as well. Additionally, staff has separately done an internal calculation of field capacities and needs. This calculation was purely based on registration numbers and the ideal capacity accommodated by the different shaped fields. Some figures that went into these calculations include the team sizes, the number of practices and games the program gets each week, the typical length of practices and games, and the number of teams that a field can ideally accommodate at one time. In the February twentieth Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting, I went into a deep dive into this analysis. In conclusion, the fields that were needed were both the same in the master plan and the internal analysis. We show the need for those two multipurpose rectangles and four baseball softball diamonds that will support our recreation programming for years to come. Our next portion of the presentation will actually be presented by Rob Del Ross, where he'll go over the site conditions and what we have to work with on the site, followed by the project schedule.
Good evening, mayor and council. You've seen these graphics before, just want to show you again to give you a little bit more detail on the site and some of the challenges we're going to be getting into over the next six months when we leave and design. The contour map you see on the screen, it's impossible to see some of those numbers, but generally, for a contour map, the closer the lines are together, the steeper the terrain is. If they're spaced far apart, that's more of a flat area. You'll see how that comes into play in the next couple of slides. Another important element of the site are the buffers that we have related to the water. So the orange, cursor on the screen, orange triangle here is a springhead, along with the stream here on the eastern end of the property. Those trigger buffers, buffers for now, when we're in concept phase, are things that we're wanting to steer clear for. As we move further into the design process, there are going to be opportunities for us to have small encroachments into that blue area. Each buffer is significantly more challenging to encroach on. We'll just be kind of dialing that in a couple of feet here and there when we get into wrapping up our construction documents. The contours map previously give you the colored map on the screen this. Red and orange is steep, steep. You'll see, again, the springhead, the water right here, falling off to the water on the western end of the property, as well as steep terrain onto the eastern end of the property where the stream is. The last map we're showing you is important for us. There's eighty feet of fall on this property, which is hard to imagine, eighty feet from top to bottom, eighty feet from the high point where the red is to the low point at either end. When we're dealing with an active park facility, it generally fields are relatively flat. That means in order to grade the property, we're dealing with walls typically along the perimeter. We've always known the site would need walls in order to construct it. The good news, as we've dialed in some of the elevations for the fields and looked at tiering some of the baseball areas and not necessarily building all four fields at the exact same elevation, that has given us some better news than the earlier concepts as far as wall heights. Based on Whit's analysis right now, we're not anticipating needing walls higher than ten feet, which is great. Early on in the project, when we were looking at the first feasibility analysis, we were a little scared that we'd get into walls of fifteen or twenty feet tall. Last slide for me, just a quick snapshot of where we are on schedule. Kicked off in December with our stakeholders meeting. We've had a lot of public input to this point, two in-person meetings as well as a survey, discussion with P RAB in March. You'll see where we are tonight, April twenty-eighth. Our plan moving forward is to incorporate the feedback we hear from you this evening into a site plan recommendation and hopefully approval in front of P RAB next month. If that goes well, we'll be bringing you a recommendation in June. If we get a positive approval in June, that would lead into construction documents later this year and hopefully breaking ground in spring of twenty-six. I'm going to turn it over to Whit to summarize our public outreach efforts and the concepts.
Thank you very much. As Rob mentioned, we've had several good, robust rounds of public input, a lot of good attendance, a lot of really good attendance online, taking the survey. You see there on the left, that was the result of how many people came to our survey to answer certain questions. You know, a thousand people viewed this. We had four-hundred-and-fifty different people answer this survey in different ways. And the question that was put to everyone, both online and in the public input meetings, the in-person meetings, was the same. It was the same list of questions. And that was, as Tom was mentioning earlier, in addition to diamond baseball fields and rectangular multipurpose fields, what else would you like to see in the park if it would fit? And help us rank that. As we talked about earlier on the site, there's a few little areas here and there where we can work in, playgrounds, trails, some amenities, pavilions, things that go with a park design. And we wanted the citizens ranking to help us figure out which ones those took priority. What you see up there in the upper right were the results of that. Walking trails being the overwhelming top choice of things to go with the fields. The playground, and there's a lot of discussion about a special needs inclusive playground that would be incorporated into that design, one of the big top vote getters there. And you can see how the rest of that broke down. Pickleball being very important as part of that, pavilions, and people wanting general open space and a few other things. There was a request here, let's see, I'll skip down to the public input meeting results. Same colors, same categories, walking trails jumped to the top. Pickleball was, again, a highly desired item. One thing at the public input meetings, you see there was a request for an off-leash dog park that jumped out sort of in the lead of people who came to the meeting. But as you'll see through the concepts in a moment, we're pretty tight. The site's pretty tight by the time we do the fields and other things. So we then have to start thinking about what elements go together and work in conjunction with each other, and which sometimes are perceived as conflicts between each other. So that helped steer where the concepts went from the public input. And one thing that was important, this was the results of our first meeting. When we came back to the public in the second in-person meeting, we brought the various concept options that you're about to see, and we asked for additional comments. One comment that you'll see was that the people that supported rectangular field sports, lacrosse, soccer, football, all of those things, asked, hey, if we're going to have additional turf that's not programmed on a baseball diamond, if it's designed for baseball, could we still practice there occasionally? Could we still do warm-ups on those fields? And that's an operational thing for Tom and them to work out in terms of how the seasons work and all. There's no reason why they would be precluded from using the baseball fields, let's say. That was one thing, that was really the thing that stood out at the second public input meeting, was the ask to maximize all of the turf for multiple sports as much as possible. So going from that, let's see, that was, okay, there's the summary of that. The additional public input meeting, we had the P RAB meeting in March. People asked at the Parks Board, asked for a playground to be added inside the baseball complex so that parents watching their children play could also have a younger child nearby on a playground inside. The baseball field sizes were discussed. You'll see on the concepts some of the outfield distances, we looked at those. There was one big request that the P RAB had for us, and you'll see in the concepts, we have an area where we're going to have to do stormwater detention. And rather than just putting that into an open pond that serves no other purpose other than stormwater, could we cap that stormwater pond with underground detention, just like you do sometimes in a parking lot, and do either a field, more field space over the top of it, or could we do the pickleball complex there? And I'll walk you guys through that in just a moment here on the concept. Let's see, at the P RAB meeting, one of the board members asked that four dedicated diamond-shaped fields be included. And again, the very bottom bullet that you see there, that was the request that the diamond fields accommodate some multipurpose. So we're sort of getting a little bit of both sides to that argument there. And you'll see options on that here in just a moment. So in the concept, can you see, can you guys see the pointer if I'm pointing at? You see guys pointing to? Okay, great. So in concept one, in every one of these designs, you're going to see the bones of the park are largely set up the same way. And there's some reasons for that. We need to provide connectivity between Deerfield in a future mixed-use development. Up here where the fries building is, there is the curb cut already right here in Deerfield. And by connecting the dots with a road to connect up to the future multipurpose, providing that connectivity, that starts to divide the complex in one way. If we're going to put four diamond fields together in a cluster, this is really the only area of the site that widens out wide enough for us to do that. And back on the slope pictures that you saw just a moment ago, this is, of all the site, this is the flattest. Nothing's flat, but it's the flattest area of the site. So by the time we dedicate this area for the four fields, we look at dividing the site like this with the road, we need two rectangle fields where there's one spot here for rectangle, there's another spot down here for rectangle. Then it starts to, you know, we can work in parking around those things. It starts to leave us areas like this for some of those other amenities that people asked for. And we looked at several options on that between the different concepts. Here, in this concept, on this field, we looked at the possibility of extending the retaining walls, Rob mentioned, as far out as we possibly could, all the way out to the buffer. And where eleven is shown right there, putting the stormwater detention underground, underneath that field. You have to do some manhole things. There's some engineering issues with that, but it's workable. With that would be a concession restroom building. Let me back up, sorry. Concession restroom building here, a little storage building for multipurpose use there. At the baseball diamond cluster, a concession restroom building in the middle, batting cages scattered around, if you would, there, more storage for baseball. And Rob talked about the terracing. We can put a terrace in the middle of the complex rather than a big retaining wall at the bottom or a big retaining wall at the top, and make it a nicer amenity. You know, you could, you've seen, if you've been to Fowler Park in Forsyth County, they have the spectators sit up above the field looking down. Makes it a nicer spectator event, too. So we're going to try to work that in to save bigger walls elsewhere. Stormwater detention down here in the low point. An option that we have that we think makes a lot of sense is when you drive in, you're driving in from Deerfield, you see these retaining walls here. These are up, so you're driving in underneath a bridge that we would want to connect over the road so that people playing on this field to this field back and forth don't have to cross an at-grade crossing. We hope to be able to do that within the budget. That's an element that we may have to look as an add alternate. Back here, this works in the playground element that people requested, along with a restroom and a pavilion, and gave an option for a splash pad to go with that. It also gave an area for an open lawn, pavilion. You know, this is the inflatable area for birthday parties, where you have the jump houses, those kind of things, and then a trail network that joins all of that together. So that was, that's option one. Option two changes some things around a little bit. Option two drops the splash pad, but still leaves the inclusive playground there with some shade shelters for it. It works in an eight-court pickleball complex back in this corner. Here, we showed that option I was talking about a minute ago. Budget-dependent, as we get deeper into the engineering, we, you know, if budget starts to become a thing and we're really running up against making sure we're hitting the budget, then extending this wall out and extending this area for turf might be something we have to look at and do an open detention pond possibly instead. All of this being the same concessions you see here, the bridge being the same.
Sorry, quick question. Those two rectangle fields from Deerfield Parkway are elevated above Deerfield Parkway?
Yes, yes. Correct. So as you drive in, you will be looking into two walls and possibly slopes. That's one thing, as we get deeper into the engineering, as Rob was saying, you know, we've been able to lower some walls. We might be able to even make some of that go away even less with some slopes. It depends on how tight we get. And then back here in the four-field diamond complex, this option gave two two-hundred-foot fields, a larger two-seventy-five-foot field for older players. This option gave us an overlay. This shows the amount of space needed to run some of the rectangle field sports on the diamond, with no changes to the diamond shape, basically. You're just playing in the outfield, basically, if you would. And the infield's, these are not dirt. This is all artificial turf, so it's all still the same surface. One thing that we may, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, a quick question. In concept one, you don't have a diamond that large, correct?
Correct. These are all two 25-foot fields, uniform fields in this option.
What's the drawback of not having a field, a larger size? Would that preclude us from being able to offer a higher youth baseball?
We, we, uh, consulted with the Hopewell Youth Association and they looked into their numbers after the Parks and Rec Board meeting in March and, um, this setup with three 200s and a 275 is, gives them more flexibility down the road. Um, because right now we only have the one field at Bell that can accommodate the younger high school kids. Um, this field I'm looking at even potentially putting a, you know, like a 12, 16-foot fence in the outfield that could play like a 300, and it's a true high school field. It'd play like a high school field.
So Hopewell would prefer concept two?
Yes.
And look at the bottom two fields between these two as I flip back and forth. This one, 225 is more generous. 200 is the minimum for playing some different league sports. So those two on the bottom are still meeting the minimum standards. The 225s are just more generous and we're stealing space from the 225s to make the 275.
Right. And I guess we add, we add the multi-use, I guess, too.
Yes. And this option showed the what if we squared off one of the diamonds to create, uh, what it off, what it offers when they do their programming for practice is you can sometimes practice other infield's with the younger children. You can have three infield practices going at once if you square that off. Um, and that's seen in big sport tournament complexes on a regular basis that you see there.
And the infield's will be turfed?
Yes, correct. It's all artificial turf on the surface. Just brown carpet, basically. It's the same as all the rest. And the choice here, if you'll look over, over to this area where the pickleball and the stormwater detention basin are. One of the P RAB requests was, could we look at this option in terms of the dimensions of the wall? And could we move pickleball over the top of the stormwater? Freeing up more land back here for open space, a future splash pad. Basically, they're getting more amenities down the road, if you would. There are some pros and cons of doing that at this stage right now, whether we want to lock in pickleball into that engineering of that wall, because then we're kind of committed to, to engineering that wall and that underground stormwater to that level. Whereas if we can leave pickleball sort of where it is, it gives us a little flexibility as we get deeper into the engineering and the budgeting as to whether or not we can afford to go all the way out to the buffer with the wall or whether or not we have to step that back. And that's a, that's a, that's a moving target we would like to leave moving a little bit as we get dialed in on the budget just a touch. Uh, and all of these things, if you look at the two diamond fields options, multipurpose field overlay over the larger outfield works here with no changes to a diamond field layout. Whether or not we decide to square this off or leave this truly rounded like a true classic baseball field is a decision we can make in engineering way down the road. And that may come into play if we're able to, sorry, leave pickleball as shown here, cover the underground detention with more turf, getting more multipurpose field of those little small field overlays out that direction. We may or may not need to fully puzzle of sliding pieces that will become more clear as we get deeper into the budget. Any questions to that? Is there, is more from Rob? Do you have any more after that?
I mean, I, I, I guess, is there a decision point you want us to talk about now or just leave that flexibility open? Was that, was that the decision point that you are looking for?
I think it's gonna, one of the big decision points is what do we want to prioritize if we can't get pickleball and splash pad and playground? What would, what would be the, the recommendations from council? When, um, the, the Parks and Rec Board had a hard time deciding, and that's kind of where the, the recommendation of, well, can we put it in the extra turf space instead kind of came about? Uh, so I think the real question is, you know, what, what other amenities are we looking at? Cause we've, we've got a lot of moving parts with the fields that I think as we go through, we can satisfy all the needs of the programs and get everyone to more.
But if, if we choose concept two, does that allow?
Don't, don't worry about what concept, just, just what you like from, I'll, I'll, there's more presentation and I'll kind of touch on what we're looking for, but you know.
It's definitely a mix of that.
Can you get back to the, yeah.
Can you get back to the feedback from all the different, uh, online and live meetings? At the, at the live meetings, uh, at the second live, the, the initial live meeting, the question was, don't worry about diamond or rectangle fields. We're going to have some. Give us your input about other stuff that could go with. When we presented the concepts at the second public meeting, really the only, the real significant input that we received was, hey, could, if we're going to have multipurpose fields, could we still have some room to play multipurpose field practice, warmup? Maybe our smaller fields on the diamond field outfield. That was really the only input we received.
I got a couple of questions. The retention ponds that are over near the baseball fields, can they, could they be covered or no?
Possibility, sure, yes, they could.
I, I guess my, my, one of my concerns with the baseball fields is I don't see any place for all the family's little kids to play while the other kids are playing baseball. And I haven't been to a baseball game yet where there isn't a lot of other little kids. And there's nothing for them to do in that area. So could we cover that retention pond and put a playground of some sort there? Or find a spot where we can have some swings or some sort of activity for kids? I mean, I'm just, I think we're missing something.
I didn't touch on that, but that, the difference between one and two, there is none in number one and number two. That was in response to the, that comment that we received at the P RAB. That, that little purple circle that you see, there's just a placeholder for playground inside the complex. And we can do that in a way where, um, you know, it could be as long and skinny there as you, as you like. We would want to net it. Anytime we start getting out beyond the core, we want to cover that with net.
Sure.
And there's, we did a part just like this in Douglas County where we have a, that's the two to five-year-old structure playground. It doesn't have to be as large as the older children, right? Uh, that, that easily fits here so that parents inside the complex, you're having your picnic, you're having your hot dog, you're having your coke. And then there's the playground right there immediate to the center of the complex. There's always possibilities placing it out here as well. It gets bigger, there's more room for it. Then, but it gets back into that overshot, the home run ball. We're having to net that more, I guess, basically to cover it out there. And it's a little bit more remote from where the parents sit, basically.
Yeah. And we, we also had talked, Whit and I had talked about maybe flipping the restroom concession and the playground and putting the playground in the center of the four diamonds. So then, so then you can essentially watch your child and watch your kid play from any of the fields.
Yeah, that's right.
Um, if, if, if the site were to fit it.
So my question is, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I believe when we started this exercise, it was to satisfy demand for the fields, um, rectangular and, and, um, baseball. And I know at the podium several times, there have been people who've talked about still the shortage of, sorry, allergies are killing me. Um, sorry, a rectangular field. Are we meeting that demand in Milton?
With this, with, uh, yeah, with either one of these two concepts, yes, we will.
That's actually what I wanted to point out, because I've, I've been asking that question all along. You've got proponents of rectangles, rightfully so. You've got proponents of diamonds, rightfully so. What does the data suggest, right? And I'll go back to your slide number.
That's where I was headed, thank you.
Your slide number two summed it up, right? Not only is it in the comprehensive plan, right? But you guys have looked at allocation based on our providers and the field utilization that's needed.
Correct.
And it sounds like the recommendation for four diamonds, two rectangles is data-driven. That's what we need based on our growth rate and our current program providers.
Well, is, let's turn that into a question. Is that, will these two fields take care of the concern about rectangular fields?
Yes. From, from the Parks and Rec Department standpoint, yes, we'll have, we'll have the capacity to accommodate lacrosse and football and adult soccer.
Because my overall preference is that this property should satisfy the demands for the fields. And I like your idea because everybody has others in tow. And so everything else, you know, as important as you all deem it important, but I don't think there's anything more important than getting the fields just right. The right sizes, the right usability. And if other things have to go to other properties, then so be it. But this property needs to get it right and not just get so crowded in that we don't get it right.
One thing, I guess it was the steering committee, uh, meeting when we met with the rectangle field leagues. They mentioned that of the field widths, one thing you don't quite see here on these two diagrams is the width of the striping for the two rectangle fields. This one is sort of their minimum size. This one is a little wider and they told us, hey, if we can get, oops.
I know, it's coming back.
It's going to come back. They told us if we could get one of these wider, it allows them to do three of these little mini half fields side by side by side through there. So we're trying to maximize this one to give them even more field space and more games that can be played simultaneously, uh, by, by maximizing this one.
Well, I agree with Councilmember Cokerly. The field experience, the field, getting the fields correct is first and foremost, at least in my opinion, the priority. Make the experience well, right? Everything else isn't nice to have. And to me, it's based on public feedback that you guys have asked. If they want, what, trails and a playground and pickleball and splash pad? If we can cram it in, great. And if it's within budget, great. I mean, let's look at it in an unconstrained way and how do we fit it? Then relative to the budget, what can we afford to do, not do, but get the fields right.
I know you didn't ask this question, but I think that bridge, no matter what our budget is when it comes to budget priorities, I think that's going to be a, a very important because the, the less amount of kids we have going across that, I think is going to be the better for sure.
Especially if that would be in the road that cuts all the way through.
A hundred percent.
I think the other thing is that retention, covering the retention pond, even if you have to do without something else right up front, but you can't go back and cover the retention pond later. So if you do that up front, we've got that area, we can use it. Uh, if that means leaving something else out initially until we can go back and afford to build it, then do it that way. But I think not covering the retention pond might be a mistake because you're not going to want to go back and do it later.
Is that, is that like a, I mean, we asked the question a couple of council meetings ago for a developer, what is the difference in price? Cause they did underwater, underground and they said it was like four and a half times.
It is more expensive for sure. But we always look at it, you guys are like a lot of places. It's, land is more expensive later. So if you, if you needed to buy more property down the road to get another one of these amenities to fit somewhere else, could you, the, the land cost alone probably is, is why the developers do it, right? There's a reason why they put detention under parking because they're trying to maximize their acreage. You guys are sort of in that same, same boat now, if you would, here. Where capping detention gives you more acreage for development. It may mean the amenities can't go in right now. It's, it's more of a budget impact initially versus the trade-off down the road of when it's time to build these amenities somewhere else, do you have enough acreage down the road?
Does this plan assume we're going to be using parking from neighboring parcels or are we able to?
There, next slide, yeah. Like Rob, you want to talk about?
Sorry.
Did you answer your question? I know, we didn't even touch on pickleball courts or, you know, so.
Is, is there, is there a preference from council generally?
Can you go back to the slide of where all the voting was?
On the ancillary amenities outside of the ball fields.
The councilor had his point.
Can you go back?
Public comment.
Again.
You know, and I also want to think about where this is going to be.
Can you go back farther?
10 years from now, right? Like what is going to get the most used?
There you go, for slope and all that.
No, 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 keep going, go forward, forward, two more, three more, I think now.
Public input.
No, sorry, forward.
Oh, you're going to public input.
There we go.
Okay.
So walking trails clearly and a playground.
Where is pickleball court? Oh, I see it over there.
It's the top one in each of them.
Green space, you know, we're going to, we're sort of, we're maximizing what we can. There will be the streams that we're going to stay, you know, the streams will stay streams. So there is going to be some nature out there along the stream corridors. But we're sort of tight on any other open space.
How much land, how much surface area do we gain if we submerge the pond? I mean, the retention pond, cover it?
I'm going to, this is an off the cuff.
What are rough dimensions of that?
We're 40 by 60 on the mini fields. Is that where we are? Is that right? Uh, another, it's a 120 by 180. It's not, it's not, it's three quarters of an acre, two thirds of an acre, somewhere.
It's 120 by 180.
Yeah.
Almost half an acre.
Half an acre, yeah, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I think outdoor pavilion would be great too.
Well, don't we just have a lot of grades for a small park?
So is pickleball court, is that the what?
P RAB had asked for the pickleball court to be considered built right here. You see where I covered the detention there? They've asked for, is it possible for us to place the pickleball there? Thus then freeing up that back area of the park back there for further development down the road. If budget, you know, if, if more splash pads are built down the road or more pavilions and open space are built, you know, down the road. Basically, um, the thing you'd be sacrificing there would be the additional rectangle field overlay space, which then, but to y'all's numbers, you only need two really, so.
Yeah, pickleball.
And we could, we could still design the baseball fields to fit rectangles inside them.
Pickleball's really loud.
It's loud. What was the P RAB's, their, what was their recommendation?
They asked us to look to see, could we place pickleball there over the top of?
But could you, could you not just put the park and pavilion and, and that? I mean, I, I hear playground and pavilion and that stuff. I think little kids. I think soccer, I think more little kids playing soccer. Then you could keep pickleball where you have it, which is back over in the corner because it's so loud. You won't hear from the other fields.
That's another possibility. Yeah.
I mean, I, I agree with what was said earlier. I think getting the fields right so that we can accommodate all the kids that want to play on these fields and then making sure that parking is right so that it doesn't take people half the day to get in and out of the park? And then all the other stuff.
There's a few things, you know, if we're going to cover detention that go with that. Turf is, that turf's turf, it's carpet. If you ever, you're going to have, we're going to have maintenance manholes that will have to get down into the, the underground tanks, just like the developers and the parking lots do. They have to get down there and do maintenance from time to time. Turf, we can manage that if there's ever something serious that happens with the underground detention. Worst case, you're not tearing up a whole lot to move the carpet back and do the work. Uh, pickleball is probably the next least, uh, impactful there and in term, or most impactful, we'll say. It's asphalt, it's just like a parking lot, but you do have fences, you have lighting. There's some foundations for lighting we have to think about. That starts to get into, how does that impact the underground cells? And there's some engineering problems there to be worked out, but it's.
It has the pickleball with the, like, the, uh, playgrounds, right? It's connected to pickleball. So I mean, I, I play tennis, I don't play pickleball.
Yeah.
If I had a playground sitting right next to me while I'm playing tennis, you know, I don't know. I mean, that might be tough. Um, but I also like pickleball because it brings another subset of the community into the park. So, you know, it's, it's tough. It's really tough. I, I hate to make a decision tonight, to be honest with you.
Going to pavilions and playground features and things like that though, in that, in that space will get even tougher. The, the loading for foundations for building code, X, Y, Z, all of that stuff. And what those underground tanks are designed to have over the top. It, it's all, is it, is it engineering solution there? Yeah, probably. But now the budget is ticking up as we do that.
Is there any way?
No, go ahead. Go ahead, Councilman Kramer.
Ju- just to be clear, you're looking for directional guidance, not necessarily a firm decision?
Yes, absolutely. We're, we're looking for, we would lean towards one versus the other. And maybe, maybe I should have led with a little more, you know, let's talk about pickleball and a splash pad. What, what's the difference, right? So both are wildly popular activities. Um, splash pads are always a hit with kids, no matter what. They'll, they'll run in them fully clothed and the parents got to figure it out in the car when they get back. But they're operating only really six months out of the year. And it's essentially running another pool without staff, right? Because there's still pumps and, you know, the water that you gotta keep clean. Pickleball is more, more versatile with use. You're using, you can use it year, year round, right? And it's extremely popular. And, uh, you know, it has its maintenance as well. It's, it's, you know, there's lights to maintain and it still needs resurfaced every five to seven years. But, you know, there's a little bit of a quick layout between the two activities, if that helps at all. The splash pad's gonna be more expensive to build up front.
I mean, and also, if we're talking pickleball, there's really nowhere else we're gonna put it. I mean, it's not going at Milton, at the tennis, the, the tennis center.
No.
There's really no other place for us to even putting that because that does disturb a lot of people, so.
Well, I'll give you guys my two cents. Here's, here's where I'm at. One, I lean on the data because that's what the community provided us, right? And that's what the community wants. And if P RAB had an ultimate recommendation, that would be great, too. But ultimately, it's gonna come down to space and cost, right? So, I may tell you one thing now, if you come back with a cost that tells, that says, well, it's cost prohibitive. We can't do that if we wanna do A, B, and C. I guess my point is, I don't know if I have enough data and concepts and cost to be really directionally accurate, other than what you've gotten from the community thus far, right? Because that's what I'll go to. I said, in an unconstrained environment, I'll say, well, they want trails, they want pickleball, they want a splash pad, and they want an all inclusive playground. Give it to them all. Until you come and tell me, well, I can't give you all of that. And here's why. Oh, and here's the cost. If you gotta pick and choose, here's the cost of each. And then, when am I getting out of budget? So, without having all that information, it's just hard to give you anything other than what the survey data is suggesting.
From a planner's perspective, leaving ourselves a little flexibility as we get deeper into engineering here and not having to make those decisions until you have that data would be, I would suggest that we, we show pickleball shown where it is here and not commit it to that over the top detention. Because that's harder to unwind that later as we get deeper into budgeting. I like the idea of maximizing field play with the retaining wall out over detention until we study those walls a little bit more and we do the volume hydrology calculations and all of that stuff. And we know that the detention cells are gonna add X costs to do all of that. Then, we're not having to then, okay, well, stop the presses, let's move pickleball back to the corner. Let's get rid of the splash pad we just engineered or whatever. We're having to unwind everything. We're trying, we're circling here and we're getting tighter and tighter and tighter on the plan. But I like how the pickleball back here gives you that flexibility down the road.
There, there you go. You're getting to an ultimate desired state in sort of an unconstrained environment. Put pickleball in, cover the, the, the water detention, work in a splash pad somewhere, and let's see if we can make it work. Let's see if the numbers work. Let's see if the budget works. Then we start picking it apart.
Has there been any? Pickleball was, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just asking, has there been any research done on pickleball and its popularity waning? Like, what I don't want this to be is like, hey, let's put a racquetball court out there or a CrossFit box and, you know, five years from now, no one's playing pickleball anymore. Like, has there been any, has anyone done any research on the fadness of pickleball? My boys would kill me if they heard me say that, by the way, because they totally want pickleball courts. I'm just asking.
I don't have any definitive research in front of me. I, I have heard that it's starting to flatten out, but it's not declining. That, that rage and that, that straight incline of participation has started to level out a little bit. But it's still popular, very, very much so.
So, my North Star on this is simple. Figure out the fields first and then accommodate as you can, price it out, and let's see where we are.
Yeah, budget's gonna be, probably gonna be what's the driving.
It's really gonna be, my gut says, we've done some costing, we've shared that with staff a little bit. We think splash pad is definitely, puts us over the top.
Wow, okay.
So, that's, uh, the things that you see right here, uh, pickleball being a, do we maybe grade for it, but we don't pave it out, light it and all of that stuff, come back later and do that later. That's a possible alternate bid item. Getting the playground, the fields, like you talk about. That is, that's what we're shooting for in the budget.
To Councilman Jacobus's point, covering the stormwater is gonna be more expensive. And it would be more desirable to have that as usable space potentially down the road than maybe having a pickleball court today. Is that a fair?
I would agree with that.
Build the wall, even if we don't put it, build the wall out there, cover it, even if it's just grass today.
Uh huh, I would agree with that.
Something like that.
Long-term plan.
To have that as an availability, because now you've got that extra space. And then, sure, grade, I think that's a ten there now where you had the pickleball courts, like prep it. And if it doesn't fit into the budget to build it now, then maybe that's something we do next.
Correct.
We good?
Yeah, good.
All right.
Thanks, Seth.
Great, thanks.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, parking.
Very, very, very fast. Councilmember Haney's question from before. You, one important point, both concepts here are underparked. Based on the need of four diamonds, two rectangles, that would give us roughly four hundred parking spots for the park. In order to accommodate four hundred parking spots on this site, we'd be losing a baseball field. So, we have been negotiating, negotiating's a bad word. We've been speaking with adjacent properties. We're very confident, very optimistic. We're gonna be bringing an agreement forward in May for a short-term parking shared agreement with the old city hall complex to our southeast on the parcel.
I, I feel like we've already covered all this. This is the last slide. Yeah, I think we're talking about, you know, where our points could be for discussion, so.
I think we're good on that.
I think we have some good direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, great presentation.
Good stuff.
Thank you. Looking forward to y'all coming on Under Budget. Thanks, appreciate it.
It's just a ton of retention and underwater and bridges and retaining walls. That, all, all that stuff's cheap.
Okay, uh, with that, will you please call the next slide?
Mayor, our final reports and presentation item D is the presentation of Destination Deerfield, RZ twenty-five dash zero seven text amendments, Deerfield Form-Based Code. Our Director of Special Projects, Mr. Bob Buscemi.
Welcome back, Bob. Welcome, welcome back.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, it's good to be back. I, you know, I've been out for several weeks and, uh, so I wanna give just a quick shout out to my team because Tracy and Robin have been really extraordinary and really working with me nonstop and keeping me abreast and keeping everything flowing. So, it's, it's kinda nice when you have a great team behind you. All right, so tonight, um, we're really, we're really ready to enter into the approval process for the text amendments. And so, I wanted to just kinda go through that and make sure that we give the council one more presentation prior to the official first read and then adoption. So, just, um, just some reminders. I mean, this, everything that you're gonna see tonight is really more of the mechanics of this whole implementation plan. It's the code text amendments. It's probably the most driest part because it's not all the concepts anymore. We're not looking at pretty pictures anymore. We're not looking at things like that. We're just looking at code text to make everything that we had previously come to the council and presented and to the community, because there's been quite a robust community outreach program, which Greg did, I know he left, but I wanted to thank him, too, because him and his team really did a great job in getting this thing out to the community, which was the really, one of our biggest charges. I know the mayor said he really wanted a super robust community outreach program, which we did. So, based on all that feedback and, um, and everything that we put together, this is really just gonna represent a lot of the mechanics, but, but it's good to go through it just to recap what it is we're, we're really doing. So, from a project timeline, just remind everybody, uh, today is April twenty-eighth and we're, we're making this presentation on April thirtieth, which is Wednesday. We have a special call meeting with the Planning Commission. It was really scheduled for last Wednesday and they deferred it to, um, this Wednesday. So, we'll be in front of the Planning Commission going through and reviewing all the text amendments with them. So, um, any comments they may have, we'll bring back to council during the approval process. May fifth, which is right around the corner, um, first, um, Monday in May, we'll be doing a first read. So, the first read is just generally, you know, just to get it out there, let the public know what's going on. There's really no discussion. And then, um, May sixth, we're doing a DRB and PC joint work session to review the Urban Design Manual that the consultant's been incorporating everybody's comments and, um, getting that, that to completion. And then, May nineteenth, we'll be back before you officially for the adoption of the text amendments, the, the actual implementation plan and the, uh, Urban Design Manual, which we'll be getting through resolution. So, the text amendments will be, uh, actually adopted formally. So, um, the purpose of this text amendment is to codify the pertinent changes in the Form-Based Code and regulating, um, related regulations. It's been a year-long study and it's been referred to as the Deerfield Implementation Plan. Okay, so, Article one is the regulating plan map. So, there's two changes that occurred to the map as a result of, um, of this study. One is we created sub-districts, which we spoke about, that not all districts had the same or needed the same, um, level of, of, uh, regulation. Some, we wanted to be very specific in some regulations, like that north end section that you see in the little cutout on the left. You know, we, we're allowing single-family detached, um, houses on small lots, but we're not allowing townhouses or multifamily because those areas are much more residential-based than the. Feedback we got was that they wanted different regulations for different character areas. So, there's four total character areas. There's North Deerfield, Central Deerfield, South Highway nine, and South Deerfield Parkway. And each one of those have separate regulations, which we'll go over. The other change was, um, a property we refer to as the Stone Creek Property because it contains Stone Creek Church. Originally, when we did the Deerfield, um, regulating plan for the original Form-Based Code, there was a church on this property, still exists today, an active church. And so, staff kept it as a T-two zone. And after the study was conducted and to keep consistency along the corridor and to kinda, um, keep the development pattern the way, uh, the community was giving us feedback that they really wanted to see along Highway nine, what we're proposing is, um, to change it on the front part so it would, it would join the upper T-five area here. Can you see that, Chris? And then, the lower area here. This is the hermitage back here. And then, the T-two is the church with the lake. And so, that part of the property, about half, little more than half of that frontage piece would be a T-four. So, in T-four, there'll be allowed single-family detached homes on smaller lots. And then, the front portion would be a T-five zone, which would be very consistent with the balance of the corridor. And the T-five zone would, um, allow townhouses, uh, if, townhouses will be allowed if they're in a mixed-use development. So, right now, currently, we don't allow townhomes anywhere along the corridor. As a result of the study, we are permitting townhouses as of right if they're incorporated into, uh, mixed-use development, which means they have commercial and, and, and townhomes. And so, that, that, these would be the changes that you're seeing here. It's been very consistent, it would just drop straight down.
Hey, Bob?
Yes?
Just a little bit of feedback on the sub-districts. That concept has resonated with a lot of people I've spoken to in the community. Because, and you said it well, it maintains a unique character look and feel for that particular sub-district. And it changes as you get more dense, as you travel down the corridor. So, I just wanna share that, that concept has resonated and I think it's given people confidence that it's not all just gonna look the same, right? Rather, it is gonna be unique to maintain some of the look and the integrity of that corridor. So, I just thought I would share that with you. The thing on townhomes, if we are going to allow townhomes on T-five, you said, right?
That's correct.
Is looking at the, the width of townhomes. In other words, so they don't look so, I wanna say apartment-like or too narrow, right? Rather, they look like something that belongs in the community. So, I don't know, maybe I'm jumping the gun a little bit and it's already in your presentation, but just some guidelines, some guidance, some minimum thresholds around, you know, the size or the width of these so that the appeal is still Milton-esque.
Yeah, I think that, that is a really important point because right now, the way the code is written, you could actually do a lot with a minimum width of eighteen feet, which is extremely narrow.
What is it, townhome eighteen feet wide?
You can get a townhome at eighteen feet wide right now in the code. And, um, and I think that setting it more like twenty-eight feet would give you the width. Now, if you just draw, walk around the block here, you'll see that John Whelan did those townhomes right next door. And not the white ones, the one right behind, right behind City Hall. Those are twenty-eight feet. They're actually kinda nice because they have dining rooms in the front. You know, they're, they're wide enough where they have next to front porches, they have deep porches. They have, twenty-eight feet is a nice width for a townhome. I think it's a Milton-sized townhome. It does a couple of things. Number one, it cuts down on, on overall density because when developers come in, they just wanna jam in as many as they can. And if eighteen is the number, Councilmember, they'll come in and say, give me as many eighteens as you can because they just wanna jam in. It's a number game. But Milton really does warrant, say, a twenty-eight foot wide townhome. It will sell for, um, a good number and, and those numbers are represented.
And Milton is another standard, so let's increase that standard.
Right, and Milton is the standard. So, twenty-eight feet, I, would be my recommendation to the council. And, and that's a great point to make. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that would be a good, a good change.
A good change.
The minimum's eighteen, yeah, that's, that's all, that's, that doesn't work.
It's kinda just, you know, that's tight. Twenty-eight is actually very nice because if you go to, uh, Kinsley, some of those are twenty-eight and they actually have three-car garages and, you know, so you're not having a lot of cars parked in visitor parking and because everybody today is more than two cars and people wanna see this stuff. So, I think it would create a certain price point and would cut down on total density of, uh, of number of units that people can get in there.
We could build that right in as a middle standard, then?
We'll put that in as the minimum.
Is that a T-five, T-six, all the above?
T-five and T-six.
What about T-four?
T-four, we're not allowing townhomes at all.
Okay, um, what about the T-four permissive?
We're not allowing townhomes in T-four permissive or T-four open.
Okay.
Yeah. So, and I think it's important, um, Council, because we have also made townhomes as of right without a use permit. And that's really important because, you know, normally, when you do something like this, the council would have a last say with a use permit to say, well, wait, you know, we wanna see what you have. So, it is important to set these standards, right? Because the, the, the asks have been, geez, we don't wanna go through another use permit approval process. So, can we just? But then again, we have to make sure the standards are up high enough where we don't have to worry about it. So, you'll see, we even put stuff in there, uh, concerning concurrency because normally, with a use permit, the council would say, okay, if you're gonna do mixed use, you know, we, we wanna ensure that the commercial gets built at the same time as the residential. That's something you'd normally do as a condition to ensure that they just don't build a residential and walk away and we never see the commercial. So, we, we've embedded that in there as well. But the width, I think, is an important, it's, that's an awesome comment. I think that's gonna be a very good. Okay, um, Article seven B, we, we've been going through this quite a bit. We created a lot of development incentives, so let's just run through them quick. So, North Deerfield, which is the purple up on the top, um, it's T-four. Townhouses will not be permitted, multifamily will not be permitted, um, single-family detached. Single-family detached will be permitted as of right and commercial still is permitted as of right. So when that, if somebody wants to come in and build a commercial development there, they can. And I think keeping that commercial element in there is important. Somebody might want to come in. I'd like to remind the council that everything we did in this implementation plan is driving towards that 20% commercial base, tax base. That's a good reminder. We're really pushing towards those numbers. So that's the way the plan is laid out and we're hoping that we can achieve that when developments come in.
That's great.
And every time we have a use permit come before council for anything in T6, let's remember that 20% was our goal. So when we make decisions, if we say, okay, we're going to allow more housing and less commercial, then we're going to offset that from what we've really designed and implemented here. We're hitting that target. If we just go with the base numbers that we show, we will hit those target ranges.
Question. When we're talking here, you have by TDR. Is that the, are you going to list out incentives? So for example, in North Deerfield, if they wanted to have nine single-family homes, what incentives do they have to do to get there?
No, in North Deerfield, you're, right now, you're allowed as of right, five. If you can get nine up to TDR, there's no incentive to get there. You'd have to buy them.
So you have to buy them. There's no incentives in that group?
That's right.
Okay.
You'd have to go and buy them. Now, in T5, you're allowed nine by right, 14 with TDR. And we do have some incentives. The number three incentive is if you build a parking structure that houses 50% of the required parking on the site, you'd get three units per acre at no charge. So again, if you have a Verizon site and you have 50 acres, that's 150 units that you don't have to pay for if you build a parking structure. We have open, public open space. If you have 10%, it's code current. If we increase it to 20, you get a 10% residential ratio. And the same thing with public access trails and trailhead, which includes a two unisex bathrooms in there for the general public to use. And you'd get another 10% ratio. So that would bring you to a 70/30 ratio instead of a 50/50. And all the plans that we've put together and modeled out, the 70/30 is hitting the target just right. Everybody, all the development community landowners have said, if I can get a 70/30 ratio, it's working for us. So that was where we landed there. And I think it looks nice on the site and it didn't look like it was residentially too heavy. So townhouses are permitted as of right, no use permit, but they do require mixed use. So you can't, somebody can't come in like, say, Fry's and just say, oh, townhouses are permitted. We want 100% townhouses. Can't do that. You have to have that mix of uses. And if they do multifamily, they have to come to the council for a use permit. So anybody who wants a multifamily apartment complex has to be in front of council. You cannot do any multifamily without coming to council. So that's very important. We kept that because we feel like council would really have to look at it, make sure that they do it. We also included 45-foot linear park. So if you put townhouses up against any public road, they have to be set back 45 feet so you can have that 45-foot linear park in front of it. So, because we don't want to see townhouses right up against Highway 9. So that would be that linear park. And the linear park does count for their open space, so it does help them do that. Okay, then South Deerfield Parkway, T6, you have 12. It used to be 36. It was just way, way too high. We cut that down to 16. We cut it in half. And then the same incentives from 1 to 3. But then we added number 4, which is if the developer comes in with a city facility and says, okay, I want to provide land or a building for any city facility, indoor basketball court, any city facility that council approves, with council approval, they can get an additional 5%, which would then let them get to 65/35 instead of 64. So it is helping them a little bit, but council would have to approve it.
So in all of these, they're going to have a certain allotment that's by right. We're not doing away with TDRs in any of these, except that we are revising it from 36 down to 16 in T6. And then they'll have additional incentives. Can they do the, can they buy TDRs and leverage the incentives or is it one or the other?
You can't go beyond the max TDR. So if you get three units per acre for building a parking structure, then you can go in and buy the rest if you wanted to.
Say that again?
You could still go in and buy the maximum TDR. But if you're using the parking structure option when you get the three for free, then you're dropping from 16 to 13.
One of the questions I had, and maybe council or Hanny's get to it, is like, you know, I think we want the developers to work with us for what we think is best for the residents there. And so, you know, if we want them to use the incentives, but they don't want to use the incentives, and say, hey, we'll buy some cheap TDRs instead to get the density and then we're not getting the incentives. Like, I wish there was a way to put that in there to where somebody has some authority to where we can guide them in the direction that we think would be best depending on the project.
I mean, when we had our work session, I think you may have suggested, do we do away the TDRs altogether and just have the incentives?
Yeah, I mean, I'm kind of, I mean, I know I brought that up because the TDRs, I just learned in the last work session, you apparently can, you swamp land, you get development credit, which I don't think that was the purpose, so.
It's up to council. I mean, we did put together the TDR program. Now, I will tell you that I've seen some concepts, like as recent as this afternoon, even on Verizon. And you're allowed 12 units per acre in T6. And I'll be honest with you, they're hitting that 12 units per acre. So when I said to them, well, can you build a parking structure and get three units per acre for free? They said, Bob, we probably won't even use it. It just doesn't fit on the site.
Because this is density neutral. We're just carrying over the density from, and so they haven't even been using the TDRs yet.
Nobody's using it. I lowered it anyway, just in case somebody comes in. We even lowered height. You'll see later, we lowered the height to four stories because nobody's coming in with 16-story architecture there. And I don't think the city of Milton would be looking forward to 16-story high buildings, 12-story high buildings. It's just too high.
Bob, would you prefer we not use TDRs in Deerfield and just focus on the incentives? Change the ratio? Or do you like the TDR as a mechanism?
Well, in T5, giving away three gives them quite a bit. They'd have two units per acre to purchase. Most people won't do that. But, I mean, it's really up to council whether or not they want to get rid of the TDR program. I don't think people are going to use it.
I mean, I don't think that's related to this discussion tonight.
I just don't know the unintended consequence.
Yeah, I would like.
Sounds like it's no harm, no foul.
Yeah, right. I mean, I think the whole purpose is if you're going to use a TDR, like, these haven't been used as much as we thought they were going to be used. And so if they're not being used and now we can incentivize the developers to build infrastructure and trails and stuff that's going to really benefit the community, then maybe that's what we end up going with.
Let me just throw this out there. I think the larger developments, the Verizans, the Twin Towers site, the Fry's site, they have so much, they're not going to use TDRs. But I do want to remind council that the single standalone sites, like the self-storage building and these other smaller assisted livings, they are using the TDR programs. And we do have people that have sold into the TDR program and are holding TDRs. So I hate to just get rid of it all. I think it will help the district for the smaller standalone sites. I don't think you'll need it on the larger ones.
All right, okay.
So we can leave it. Okay. Okay, so Article 7B, let's just run through these quick. We reduced the units for hotels from eight units per acre to four units per acre. Actually, most developers want this because we're giving away units per acre, but then they say that's non-residential and they want that residential. So they're actually happier to see the hotel drop from eight to four because it will give them more non-residential density than they can get more residences in. So we lowered it because we think it's just too much of a high number there from eight. So we lowered it from eight to four.
Did this help us get a hotel? Is this given?
This will probably help us get a hotel because we're going to, people are going to have to come in and have to do some non-residential. And we're going to say, well, now the hotel will give you more as a result of it.
But it incents boutique, like smaller hotel, right?
Yeah, yeah, like a boutique hotel. B is we're approving trails and greenways to be located in buffers. They'd be soft trails, but they'd be in buffers. C, we're requiring buffers to utilize buffers on existing adjacent properties. So this is some, some developments actually have 50-foot buffers on their plots. And we're saying, look, instead of 75 feet, we'll drop it to 25 because next door, they already have a 50. So why have a 50 and then a 75? It's just actually too much buffer. So we're trying to help the developers out a little bit there. Greenways, multi-use trails are going to conform to design requirements in the manual. We're allowing linear parks to be considered civic space, which is going to help out. Stormwater facilities, if they're designed correctly, they'll be counted toward civic space. And you know, a lot of the ones that are in there, I've designed them as lakes and amenities and people really love them and they really ending up looking beautiful. The trees are developing. They're coming out nice. I think it's a good thing to do. Trails must conform to the design requirements in the manual, pretty straightforward. Residential uses adjacent to public right-of-ways must have that 40-foot linear park setback, which I talked about earlier. Number of attached townhouses, we're reducing it from eight to six because I think eight is just way too much when you look at it. Multifamily development, where the entire first floor was non-residential. This was the option two on that. Remember, it was either 50/50 or off the ground floor. Or what we found was somebody can come in and just do a ground floor and then put six stories of residential lofts above, you know, apartments, and it would work. And we said, well, that's not what the council's looking for. They're looking to regulate that ratio. So we're taking that out. Nobody's ever used it, but now everybody's really searching for loopholes and it was a loophole. We're taking it out. Require that non-residential functions be built concurrent. Remember, I said concurrency? So we're trying to do that for multifamily and for townhouses. Exterior stairs, we've gone back and forth with the Design Review Board on several projects there already that people have been building. And they're kind of, they were a little concerned about exterior stairs. So we met with them and put in all the standards. If it opens to a green space, a side yard needs to be screened. Because I thought DRB really came out with some great things. I thought he was part of that. I think it was really important and I think, you know, so when, I wanted to show the different boards that over the years, their comments that have been repeated and consistent, that we said, look, we're going to put them and make them into, codify them into law now so that they don't have to keep fighting this and having to work with it. Because they've done it several times, great comments, and I thought they were great. Same thing with this outdoor dining enclosures. So we put in a timeframe and what the standard that DRB has been pretty much setting up over the years. And we copied that to codify that. The roof pitches, not a big deal. Civic spaces may contain public art if approved by the city council. We just wanted to make sure we got that in there. We're restricting maximum height in the T6 to eight stories. We're restricting maximum height in the T4 to three stories. Building placement will just be, that's where the linear park came in and the lodging, I already spoke about, going from eight to four. Okay, incentives under base building density was three units per acre. That's the parking structure that we spoke about, reducing 36 to 16. We touched it already. It's just in different parts. I wanted to show it to you. T4 open, the same height. Some of these are duplicated because they show up in different tables and different articles. So dropping to Article 8 use provisions. So single-family homes by use permit will be allowed in a T5 and a T6. So right now, we have no single family. So if somebody comes in and says, we want to do some single-family, say on Verizon or one of those lots, we're saying, well, it's a use permit. Go to council, show them what it is you're looking to do and let the council, you know, approve or disapprove. But we don't want to just totally say, no, you can't do it at all. So we're making it subject to council approval on that, which is through the use permit process. Townhomes within T4, T4 open and T4 permissive, except for five acre, would no longer be allowed. So the five acre had their own rules and we kind of stepped away and left that on its own. We deleted duplexes, triplexes and quadruplexes.
So let's go back to the five acre.
Yes.
Is that something to where if we're not allowing townhomes anywhere else, is that something we can just agree with? I mean, I obviously know there's stuff in the hopper, but in the future, in case things don't work out, should we be proactive and go ahead and just put that in there?
We could.
I mean, if, you know, if we're not allowing anywhere else, maybe that's something just maybe to think about, talk about Planning Commission and stuff.
Yeah, I'll talk to Planning Commission if the council wants that because that was like a separate, you know, we had a mediator and went through that whole process and everything. But, you know, I think at the time, when people are looking at that, I'm not so sure if they realize what really what these things look like until they see concepts and things coming in front of them. And we did have some come in where the public was concerned about that. So maybe, maybe we should just.
I mean, it's just like, it's been 12, 12 years or so and a lot of things have changed. And I think we're kind of working in a positive direction. And if, you know, that might be just something to think about.
There's only two lots left, but like you said, the other two lots, if that doesn't work, then it would fall back on that. So we could look at just removing it totally because it would be consistent for the.
Yeah, make a discussion point at Planning Commission and see what they.
Okay, that's great comment. Allow loft apartment, which is multifamily, permitted in T5 and T6. Delete multifamily from T4 and T5, and T4 open. We made a private museum from a warrant to permit a use. Know if anybody's going to come in with a private museum, but hey, there's always that chance. Somebody can come in with a private museum. I'm dying for a Milton museum.
30 years from now, you might get a museum.
30 years, you know. Okay, let's go through these because, you know, this has been community requested. We're deleting.
Hey, Bob.
I'm sorry.
Question for you.
Yes, sir.
Back on P, maximum height in T6 to eight stories. Is that commercial and possibly multifamily or is it just for commercial?
Well, the multifamily is four.
Okay.
And the commercial's eight, the office, the commercial office is eight. And the multifamily, we limited to four. Thank you. And I'm still hoping when projects come in, I'm pushing for any multifamily to still have some retail component on the ground level and then three stories of units. I think we need to integrate retail with the multifamily. So that's just another key point when it comes in front because it is a use permit. And when it comes in front of council, remember that what we're really trying to achieve here is that retail on the ground floor to integrate with the multifamily. We don't want pods of just retail or pods of just residential. We want a mix and we want those developments. So if you have retail on the ground floor and then apartments above, it is kind of nice because when the retail or the commercial shuts down at night, you have people above that are still actively sort of self-policing the community, right? The whole spot doesn't go dark. Right now, these commercial complexes at night, when the offices shut down or, you know, the retail shuts down, the whole, the whole area just, you know, might as well put gates and just lock it up because there's, you know, it's harder. But when you mix the residential in there, it becomes a 24-hour operation. People kind of self-police it and it keeps it active all the time. So when the use permits come in, keep that in mind as well, that it is advantageous to have some retail integrated into the ground floor. And I think it's a nicer walking experience when you're walking by to see that. All right, we're getting rid of.
A lot of the concepts that you and the consultants came up with, right?
They all have it.
There was a lot of the trails, there's the linear parks, there was the walkability, there was the retail, right?
The mix of retail on the base floor. That's really what a lot of the concepts, all the concepts I've shown. And when I met with some people today, they said, geez, Bob, we didn't realize you have some concepts. We'd like you to share those with us to, we get a better idea of what we're looking for, what's our target. Because I think most developers are looking for direction, you know? They don't want to spin their wheels and go crazy and invest. It's a lot of money and time. If we could show them what it is we want and say, look, these are the things, the six, eight. eight, ten things that we really need to achieve, I think as a team, we could really, I find that we work together and, and we achieve those, uh, those goals. We're getting rid of, uh, check cashing establishments. We're getting rid of landscape businesses, uh, from permitted to use permit anyway. Porn shops, we're getting rid of porn shops. Automobile and light truck sales and leasing, automobile specialty shops, which is like, uh, tire stores, brake shores. We, we have so many of those and we're trying to, trying to, um, not expand on that. Car washes, the same thing. People have tried to come in with car washes that, right now, the current zoning is so restrictive that, uh, nobody's been able to really get a good one. If you've had an existing one, which you saw, cactus and stuff, we ended up redoing them all. Uh, and I think they do look a lot better, but, you know, I, I think we have a nu- a number of them. I don't know how many of those you need. And, uh, so we did study the card and to say that we, you know, it's not like we don't have any. Milton does have some. Recycling center and, um, and we deleted the residential abutting Highway Nine. Okay, and then the last is just definitions of a linear park. We wanted to make sure we did that and what a definition of a sub-district is. And that's all the changes that we made.
Any questions for Bob? Great seeing you. Great presentation.
Glad you're back.
Lot of great work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I don't know what a lot of this stuff is, although I'm learning, but I know with your input and what you've done to the city, if the output of this beautifies Highway Nine and Deerfield, man, I'm excited. I'm excited.
And I think it will.
Nice work to you and the team.
Between the city taking control of the design of Highway Nine and then the architecture abutting it, the two married together, it will transform the entire city of Milton.
Excited.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we please call in next, uh, presentation.
Uh, Mayor, that concludes your reports and presentation, but we'll move into first presentation. That first item A is consideration.
I think we got one more, one more. Is I on D or am I on first presentation? I'm on first presentation. Chalk one up for you. There you go. Okay, move on to first presentation.
As I was saying, item A is consideration of U-2501 located at 12-900 Arnold Mill Road, Zone AG1 Agriculture to request a use permit for a rural event facility. Section eight point seven point one H of the UDC for a maximum of three hundred attendees within the existing twenty-three thousand square foot activity center on a six point six one acre property. It's agenda item number twenty-five zero nine-nine. Item B is consideration of RZ-2501, a text amendment to Article Six Special Purpose District of the Unified Development Code for the City of Milton, Georgia, to add regulations with respect to a new Arnold Mill Road hamlet overlay. Agenda item number twenty-five one hundred. C is consideration of RZ-2503, Article Twelve Administration, Section twelve point eight point six point E, demolition permits, public hearing to amend notification requirements to the Unified Development Code for the City of Milton, Georgia. Agenda item number twenty-five one zero one. Our final first presentation item, well, is D, consideration of RZ-2504, Article Nine Site Development, specifically adding nine point one point four point A point eight to clarify parking of commercial vehicles and equipment within agricultural and single-family districts and modifying Section nine point one point six point C, heavy construction to the Unified Development Code for the City of Milton, Georgia. Agenda item number twenty-five one zero two. Mayor Jameson?
Okay, um, do I have a motion on the first presentation items?
Well, okay, we got four. I'm just having a check in.
Open it for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the first presentation items as read.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the first presentation, presentation items as read by Councilmember Jacobus and a second from Councilmember Johnson. The voting is open. And that motion passes with Councilmember Cookerley not present. Okay. There are no public hearings, zoning agenda or unfinished business items or new business items. Does any council member have anything to report on? Okay, with that, I'll open it for a motion adjourned into executive session to discuss.
Mayor? If I could, I apologize for interrupting. With the council's approval, I'd like to postpone that executive session until the next meeting.
Sounds good to me. With that, I would like to have a motion to adjourn.
Can we make these votes electronically since we're here?
Sure. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, got a motion from Councilmember Haney and a second from Councilmember Jacobus to adjourn. And then we will open the motion.
Voting is not open.
Okay. I'm sorry.
It's not open.
There we go.
There we go. Who was first, Madam Clerk?
So that bottom, oh, I saw that.
The motion passes.
It's still me.
Council's adjourned.